We're gonna start with our call to order. Any public comments today? On Zoom, so folks know we have Tim Kane and also Cat TV. You don't see any public comments. We have a program tour scheduled for Woodwork Room this morning. So we're having a trip down there. We have a tight time frame then because the class ends at 10:50 for them. So it'll be a re-tour. We'll come back here and do our board reorganization. Like Chair, Vice Chair, Clerk, all things that go with that. And then we'll continue with our presentation. Okay, running it down to construction trades. And I will, for Mr. Kane and Cat TV, come with me on my computer. I might lose you for a second, but, alright?
... Which I'd always done a little bit, but I wasn't teaching it like a math teacher. I was teaching it like a construction teacher. And I didn't have to make the two combinations, you know, the kids would be a lot more out of it. Um, so much. And it still showed me almost in town. You know, they get tested on it. This class, you know, just uses the mitre saws and stuff, you know. The mitre saws, not the table saws or chainsaws, any of that stuff. My building trades class, who gets tested on five. That's pretty much the finished product of what they would do. So that student, our track, he was a little bit ahead of everybody. And we just had the... Um, so, so he's actually just getting a nose job. He gets a tool test. So, he worked after all days. That's the good part about it. Some kids get too much a little faster. Some kids get to do the tool testing a little bit faster. But, so I have like fifty projects that the kids have to complete. So they can keep on doing projects. And then they do a burnout, and then they do the coffee. Um, the coffee thing is about, it's just a packet, so they follow the directions. And the one good part about this class is the kids get to keep the project. And everything, all the other classes were done in chats and stuff. So they don't get to keep any of that stuff. But we're doing the Little League field, and we're doing the dugouts in my afternoon class. So, we got a lot of neat projects going on this year, which is good. We've been kind of struggling. Doing a lot of chats as a focus, because this is the first year we're back out in the community doing stuff, you know, with other people.
Oh, I got a chopping board from a guy from twenty-five years ago that took his place. And they were making chopping boards, and they sold them.
Yeah. Oh, really? Yeah, the woodworking class, yeah.
Yeah.
I have been, so once they finish this, they're able to kind of pick something that they want to do. Like, we still have a whole quarter left, so he's obviously gonna build. So he may do like something like that. You know, they get the little things to do. One of the female students that I had my last class did like a mix sign. She actually still left it upstairs. So she does get to join four together and round it in, like some saying. So they get to try out different tools if they get through the... With the change in the time, this class is a little bit longer. So I think these guys are gonna have a little more time with the semester changing this year versus last year. So this, this class added a couple weeks, which...
Brian, could you talk about your certifications for your program students?
Um, so, we do OSHA count first. That's the first thing that we do. Two or three years ago, well, we've always been, we've always done NCCR, which is a national certification. If the best of that, get to your board where they put in your number, and they can see where you trained and tested out at. So for each, like, chapter of the book, like, if we did floor framing, they can test out on that. No certification. So if they move the floor to Texas or any of those states that use it, and a lot of the southern states use it. Vermont's a little bit behind because we don't have a lot of big commercial companies like that. But there are, you know, probably like five or six that got on board a couple years ago. So that's, that's a big one. Well, I haven't done first things this year or last year, but I always wanted, always did those things before. So, um, those are things that we like to offer. They just haven't aligned this year. So, in the two years of the, of the program, the NCCR thing, they could read the, you know, they get, they get the whole floor book done and then a lot of the framing stuff, so. And that, I mean, they could stop doing it for four or five years and then jump back in in the certifications. When I'm looking to add lifts, I actually, last week I did the, I did that.
Oh, is that what you go?
I did both the forklift and basket lift certification. I did it myself just to see if it would be interesting to us. And I think it's something that I'm gonna try that I imparted in actually, because almost every construction company are using lift and stuff. So I'd like to move towards that so the kids get that experience as well.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
How many of you would go to see five classes or four to five?
How many of you guys might have had a special experience with the big truck? I mean, I, the bottom of the sheet, that you keep the theater programs, because they run up so much. I'm not cheap, sorry. So I had a, a big transition this year. So these, uh, working, that, 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 I think, probably over ten, uh, that.
Thank you very much. And our class is getting out here in a minute, so we'll get out, get out of your way.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The certifications, you know, it's a little hard to hear what the sauce going, but it's an active shop, so why not? Uh, the certifications that Brian offers for his program students, he said, are a national certification that they get. And it's theirs to keep for life. So it's, uh, we've been doing it for several years, and state mandated it about three years ago. So we were kind of ahead of the curve.
It's nice that he stresses math, too, for fifteen minutes at the beginning.
Yes, we have a math, we have a math interventionist, which was through our Perkins Plan. And, uh, Kim, our student, working with identified programs or, or more math courses than the programs. And has spent some time, usually beginning in class, developing math lessons for these programs. So, so working out very well this year.
Well, they start by driving morning.
Uh, seven fifty-two now, seven fifty-two. Nothing like, I think, a lot of time, huh? Yeah, so that, so, um, there are morning programs running from seven fifty to the ten fifty, I'm sorry, nine fifty. Uh, so just about two hours. And then this interest block, the third block, we were just at, runs for sixty minutes. Um, and then there'll be an afternoon class that runs from twelve. The new time is, you gotta bear with me, twelve oh five to two oh, I think, two oh four from when.
These seniors are in this class.
Uh, the class you, the class you saw are primarily ten, eleven graders, the intro classes. There could be seniors there.
Oh, that is the intro, right?
The intro class, yeah. Yeah, programs are primarily designed for eleven to twelve. Uh, intro classes, nine and ten. Yeah. Alright, there's no more questions. We'll start with the board reorganization. Um, we'll start with nomination of Chair.
Nominating the tenth chair.
Chair. Nomination for tenth chair, is there a second?
I did.
Any other nominations?
The nominations are closed.
Nominations are closed?
I'm sorry.
All in there?
Aye.
Mr. Kevin, if you're over you.
Okay, now we need nominations for Vice Chair.
Nominee, Michael Culler.
Sorry.
Any other nominations or questions? Seeing none, all in favor of Mike?
Aye.
Okay, nominee a nomination for the Clerk for...
They're replacing Jackie Calley.
Right, I'm gonna be.
No, 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 someone did it.
I thought you was nominated after.
Nomination, okay. You have a second.
I'll say it then.
What are the duties and responsibilities of being Clerk, remind me, that I might...
Whatever it is, please.
So you, you're part of the executive committee, uh, which does super task evaluation, um, and other, some other small meetings here and there. Uh, any board correspondences with the community, which are fairly limited, I accept.
All in favor? Part of the...
I, you know, the, I don't know, the new guy, John, this year. But, we, 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 we're in the both. I'm...
Throw it in the both.
Well, yeah, so I'm gonna throw you to both. That's, that's what I wanted to do.
Welcome, welcome. Could you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Um, I'm professionally, I'm a chiropractor. Um, Austin, with Bennington, been in town since, um, two thousand and six. Um, not that interesting, actually. I'm, I'm sorry.
Look at Arlen.
I live in Arlington, yes. Representing against this very same scale, and then come on, and I live in Arlington. Um, a little bit upstairs.
Thank you, welcome aboard.
Well, thank you.
Okay, now, we have consent agenda.
Well, we, we, well, we, we, you have two, and you're, uh, let me withdraw. I wanted to, just speak on the agenda of the nomination before we have a vote. That's why we don't wanna have a vote. I'm not sure you're gonna keep your name in. Okay, and then, okay, and then the reason I wanted to speak for this is that I wanted to try to make sure we got some new people in these positions. And be supported by the ones like us that's been around for a long time. Because we, we, we can't constantly be the one all the time, but we can be good coaches to the new ones that come in and kept running that organization the way you need to do things. And so, I wanted to say that before we had a vote.
Okay.
And we have two, well, an executive clerk.
Well, did you nominate John?
Yes, I did.
So it would be something both for clerk, with your, John Asher.
Well, there's two different...
Yeah. That's what I said, I'll give you, wish you'd done some... I'll say, I, I don't mind, either way. You know what, if you would like to serve as clerk, I'm glad to be involved in that.
After a random room. Well, I, I, curious, it's not, this, bit of an experience, but I love actually being club secretary for the cabin operator club. I would be happy to if that's...
Fair enough, I was all in line in, in nomination then. Alright?
Let's do it again, all in favor?
Aye.
Can you have the rest of the page to talk about as well? The dates, when you'd like to meet, where you'd like to meet, the time, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, continue the third page with the handout, we're set. It's got a few items we have to vote on. We did the Chair, now we have to move the meeting to place. They moved, uh, Southwest Tech Assembly Room, indoor, online. Do you have a motion to accept that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
The time, good excellent, open now. We used to meet at four, excuse me, we used to meet at ten, and then we moved it to four. So this is the board's, uh, pleasure.
I would, I would like to move it to, uh, ten thirty, uh, the clock one of the other. That's what I would prefer. And the reason for it is that the first Monday is a hard switch. I, I, I have other meetings on other boards that we meet in the afternoon. So we started to move things around. It worked out well, but I was meeting in the morning, but occasionally if we met in the afternoon, I can just, I was taking the laptop and so forth. Being at a meeting and then talking and trying to do some, another meeting, two meets at the same time. And so, uh, if, if we wanted to rotate the meeting times, we could do that. It's, it would be better to say, okay, we got one meeting at ten, ten thirty, and the next one we had one at, at, uh, four thirty. A long outline, it would be so bad as getting them all in at one time. Because, uh, it, it, it affects some of all of us, I think. Mornings affect some, and afternoons affect the others. But to take and give them the, uh, right thing in place is to rotate the rings to different times.
And there's never a perfect time, that's for sure.
Right.
Can you have a comment about the time?
I would like it to be at four. That way we can encourage not only students to attend and share what they're learning in class, rather than going into their class and they're looking at us all awkward, like, oh, what was going on here? They can come to our class, maybe encourage others to, along furthermore, we can invite teachers, invite parents, the parents. I mean, even four might be a difficult, but it's, I have parents to attend, but I can't help it. You know, maybe more, uh, parents with ten meetings, they were held at a later time. And I'm not speaking of teachers and students who, uh, would, you could welcome them in. It's like, hey, you know, make a public comment. I think that would be the best time, four P M.
Yes, I'm, I'm quite ready with the rotation, um, seeing how that works out. It doesn't, you know, it's gonna affect one person or the other, or whatever that looks like, but that, like, is always more into business or something.
Yeah, Brian. And sometimes it's hard to get, sometimes it's hard to get students back in after school with that support, they're working, so, I think...
Sometimes rotation, I think.
Yes, I, I agree with that, and I think actually, obviously, wants to make the meetings at four P M, but I've done a lot, it's difficult for work. Uh, but I, I, I think the rotation could work because it'd be nice to see students in action, but then if people want to come to meeting that, then they're...
You do committees and meetings to be later, but help the schedule to, sort of, I mean, if that's one of the four best options as well.
Yes. My, my question about the rotation, um, idea, which I find with, but how much notice? For instance, I had to reschedule the presentations this morning, and I find that. But, with your meetings, like, two months, like, would it be laid out for you now?
No, usually about a month in advance, correct? I just curious, trying to break down for...
I mean, you can set, you can set the schedule based on them, based on the meeting dates. You could set it ahead of time.
I said, already, they've already said it should be four P M.
It did, right?
That's how you order them. Okay, but usually, we don't say that's conflict, second. That's something that we do more. Yeah.
Do you think it would be best to do a ten and a four, and a ten and a four, something like that?
So how would you like to start, with a ten, four and four? And then we can just go?
I mean, it's, we can, we can be flexible, it's, it's fine. Um, it will be planned out ahead of time, and the dates will be planned out. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it benefits you to have some time here during the day. You know, as it said before, I think being able to see the students in action, seeing the programs in action. You know, getting appeal to the school when it's alive versus when it's quiet and nothing's happening. Uh, I think it really helps you to see more about who we are and what we do every day. But, I mean, I can, I can be flexible with the rotation.
So starting in April, A M.
That'll be alright? So we start, the thing mentioned on Monday, April fifth...
It's wrong date. I should say the eight, eight, should be the eight. So if you wanna cross that April fifth off and change it to an eight.
So that'll be at ten o'clock. It should be four.
No, I think we're saying a conflict with the next April date, correct? Or, that's why I had an A M. Yeah, right, so it's A M, we're the April.
It's rotated.
Right.
Uh, April, next month, we start on A M.
Oh, we are, oh. Okay, Monday, April eighth will be ten, we're doing ten, ten thirty?
Well, that's what I was hoping, we made, we made it ten thirty today, so I was saying it could be, whatever, ten thirty is definitely a better time. I mean, let me, ten, ten's done fine, that's all.
Ten is fine. Okay, the thirteenth will be four, and so forth. And, uh, Secretary, would you make sure that at least a week before that, you notify the people about the meeting and the time?
Right, and you'll all get adjusted lists with all the dates and everything, your contacts, everything. When I have your information, I'll get it right back to you. And I think, um, that he has a few things about the, the dates to speak with you as well.
They are on the list just for planning purposes. There are two, we usually meet the second Monday of every month. In October and November, those Mondays are holidays. For those people who wanna plan far enough in advance, um, we need to decide whether we should meet the seventh of October or the twenty-first of October. And the same thing with November, either the fourth or the eighteenth, because the second Monday is a holiday. So the business office, it's better to be later, so I can have all the documents you need, because I'll have bank records to give you. But if you're okay with a meeting without that information, it could be that first Monday. But like October, it would be better for me to provide you all the bank information and the statements that I do, if we met on the twenty-first. Unless that's a conflict. And in November, it's definitely better if we've met on the eighteenth, because that's finance time and budget time. And the later in the month, the more information I'll have from the A O E to be able to present, you know, budget information. So, for consideration, I'm asking if those two dates could be the third Monday of the month.
All those, the October and November dates be the third Monday of the month.
Second.
Any other discussion? How much?
I just wanted, okay, okay. Oh, I wanted to, I just mentioned, and to make sure that April eighth is the date.
Yes.
And then to mention May, uh, about the sixth, that, that would be just the, oh, you're gonna have the thirteenth, we wanna have the... The second Monday will be the, yeah, the thirteenth. I just wanted to make sure that...
Okay, motion, second, everybody, to approve the moving of the October fourteenth to the twenty-first, and the November eleventh to the eighteenth. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's done.
Um, the only, I'll let you to dates, I'm sorry, it's weekend. We usually don't hold a July meeting, just wanna point that out, make sure that's still fine with the board. Um, and on the calendar that there's no July meeting, but I just, for the new members, just, you can probably, that's pointed out. And March tenth, you'll notice, March third and March tenth, there's two meetings in March because it's the floor meeting. And March tenth would be the rework for the following school year. So just in case you wonder if there was an error, because there's two dates in March, I just kinda wanted to point that out, especially for new board members. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, we need a motion to approve the Bennington ban as our paper of record.
So...
One more second. All in favor?
Aye.
Prove the warrant signers, the Chair, the Vice Chair, and the Clerk are authorized to sign moving the month when their payroll and the other, uh, house payables. One more? Second?
I also wanted to make sure, we've been using DocuSign, so the, the three, um, people approved to sign off weeks didn't have to physically come in. And it's made it very convenient for those signers that they could go on and review everything that way. So I just wanna make sure in the, in the motion, that it approves that these, if these three individuals, again, that they can use, uh, electronic means to do the signature.
Okay. Who then, a brand deal?
Amendment, I think.
Yeah, I'll say that.
Okay, so we're gonna approve the three signers and your DocuSign, which is handy, because there's this, says that we don't have to come in physically. We can sign it right there at home, on our laptop, and then sent back. You all favor that with the adjusted motion?
Aye.
Next page, there are committees that members serve on. We have the Education Facilities Committee, Finance Committee, and the Policy Committee. Now, what happens here is that if you're interested in...
Yeah, the present committees are listed. Uh, if, please indicate on this sheet of paper what committees you would like to either continue working on or change to. Give them that to me, I will get that information to the Chair, and then he will create committees with that information.
Next is the Board of Ethics, the Vermont School Board Association. Everybody received this, I'll be, at a chance, you can read it ahead of time. And, uh, we have one master one...
Yes, the master is going around, it's on the clipboard for you to sign. Whoever hasn't signed, please do that before the end of the meeting.
If you really feel that you can't sign it, it's your business, and you don't have to sign it. But if you're willing to sign it, well, it's, basically, you're gonna give it up. Next is the page of the members, your addresses, phone numbers, and email. Take a look at that, and if you have any problems with the numbers, emails, addresses, whatever, go back to the secretary, and show me you do it, and then make adjustments, get it back up. It's very handy to have, if you want.
I agree, I, I didn't know I was moving right along. And I wanted to say something, again, to plug in, uh, all of the board members to be fully active in these, uh, as a club, I mean, committees. It's very important that we and the board function to, to review certain things and question certain things in the committee that come before the board. So, uh, I think you might say it somewhere, the, the main function, one of the main functions of this board, at any school board, is to set policy. And that policy is the guideline for which the whole district operates. And that's, that's number one. And then we have to do finance, but we have laws and things that govern finance more so than it is setting a policy. You can't change the laws that says, these are the, the finance guidelines that you gotta go. Education is another very important one, is that we are that conduit between the board and what the community wants to do and sees and out here happening out, out of school, and especially a technical center. Lots of activities going on, and trying to how to pay for students to be part of a technical center, how to best represent, uh, a job in the neighborhood or the town. So it's a lot of work to be done, and I just wanna encourage everybody to, really be on committees and go over it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have the, uh, results of the, uh, board seat, and so forth, the results of the election. And then their terms expired in the next three years, and they are... And we have a list along with educators, support staff, with their, uh, extension numbers here, as well as their name and what position they hold, that's valuable. And then a copy of this year's, uh, calendar, in fact, which is, like, valuable package to have, considering this going on in the district.
Yes, and I, for point clarification, you will be getting, likely, the new calendar, this is, um, current year. The next year's school calendar is still under discussion on, as far as what in-service days, half-days, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and stuff.
Do you know, I'm getting conflicting information about the schedule for next year. I thought we got rid of those long blocks, now we went back on regular blocks. Are we going back to the long blocks again?
Um, I can't speak specifically about what MAU is doing with their schedule. Um, we are, for the tech center, we are compliant with a two-hour, one-hour, two-hour schedule. Um, I know that MAU is running a bit of a modified schedule for some students, but I don't know the exact layout, you know, for you, that doesn't really impact us directly. us directly, um, in terms of enrollment, so, um, I can, I can get back to you, kind of, kind of, schedule.
Okay, now we're gonna do the consent agenda. For the minutes from the R G B annual meeting of Monday, January eighth, motion to accept?
So moved.
Second. Questions on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Minutes from the R G B annual meeting, Monday, March fourth?
So moved.
Second. Second. Any questions, I don't... Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, payroll warrants, ten twenty-six, ten twenty-eight, ten thirty, ten thirty-two, ten thirty-four, and eighteen.
So moved.
Second. Another second. Any questions on the payroll? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And finally, vendor warrants, ten twenty-seven, ten twenty-nine, ten thirty-one, and ten thirty-three.
So moved.
Second. Any questions on any of the payroll checks? Seeing one, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, the cash flow revenue is in your inbox, you can check that out if you have any questions. Committee reports, I don't think we have any committee reports. Action, I have nomination of L N A administrator, and we're all handed this for...
So, um, this is a nomination for Trish Basal as an interim L N A administrator. Our, I guess now I can call previous L N A administrator resigned, and in order to run the program, there has to be a licensed administrator or see the program as an R N, so, um, Trish has worked for us before in the past as an L N A administrator, excuse me, many years ago. Um, and the reason this was not in the Dropbox, we did, we were waiting on the Child Protection Registry and the D C I checks to come back, and we'll turn out any clear. So this is not a permanent position, it's just, as it says, this is a statement here for, um, for the rest of this school year, until a new L N A administrator is hired.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept the...
So moved.
And second. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor of Trish?
Aye.
Second, field trip culinary superstar competition at Burger Battles and Hyde Park New York Battle.
The Burger Battle in twenty twenty-four, Hyde Park.
And that was the last page in here.
Yes. Um, this is one we've gone to for, I don't know, the last two or three years, actually, and, um, I'm pretty sure we placed last year. Um, that second, first or second? Second, yeah, we did place in the top three, and it was a, this crazy burger with like spider things on it and everything, so, uh, it was, uh, I don't know, it's fantastic, so it's, it's the annual field trip down to, uh, Hyde Park.
Do you create a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion second. Approve the, uh, field trip. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, executive session, Vermont V S A, uh, three thirteen, labor relations and contracts. We need a motion to go into executive session.
Yes, could I ask that Rebecca State, uh, for this?
Okay. So moved, going to the second.
Second, second.
So going, whether they, what, what we are going into?
Labor relations contract.
Yep. And, uh, for, for those who are watching offline, I'm going to put, uh, cat TV back into the waiting room while we have our executive session, and then I will bring them back in as soon as we are done. One second.
Aye.
I just, oh, I'm sorry. Action out of the executive session, it's a motion to accept or retire on the executive session.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And so I had a brief report, um, first of all, I had a report on our budget votes. I know folks are worried about school budgets this year passing, um, there were plenty in the state that did not pass, and I know that's a nightmare for those districts to get that rewar, rework their budgets. Um, our budget, um, for yes was five thousand two hundred and fifty-five, no, two thousand fifty-two, it's a pretty wide margin. Um, from our reserves, which are, for those who are watching, one is for equipment, one is for building repairs that we put in each year, uh, those yeses were forty-eight ninety-two and no of twenty-three forty-one, so pretty wide margins. So there's a lot of support for, for current tech ed in our centers. It's my understanding that every budget passed at this point, um, that thing speaks to the value of what we do here, um, at the school. And I'm still amazed, while our budget went up this year, we had no control over some of it, as you know, in the finance committee, that we can run an operation like this, um, all that we do, for a little over four million dollars. That, that to me is still amazing. Um, for all the equipment we have, the facilities, our vehicles, and all our field trips are, um, it's crazy. So, um, I think that takes fiscal responsibility, a lot of work on the, on the business office part, um, and, uh, so we're very happy. So I want to thank the voters for, for voting our budget in the positive. Uh, also, I want to congratulate Cutler, um, Asher Elson, T J, and John, as a newly-elected board member, all the ones who are reelected, uh, to support. We appreciate your service and, uh, and your support of our school. Uh, it's always nice to have folks on our school who have a genuine interest in school students, uh, and what we do. You show, you show that at every meeting. Thank you, thank you very much for that. Um, and two, two last things, um, I want to tell you that we are in, in high enrollment season, um, enrollment for next year, it looks a little low. We just have the M A U applications there at this point. Uh, I think part of that, as Anna asked earlier, it might be, uh, scheduling, I don't have the exact answer of why it is what it is, um, but that's gonna take a little time to flesh out. Um, we have a large number of students that are coming down to work from Arlington and U D A, and something new this year that we're doing is also, uh, shadow days for students who are interested in the center, um, will come and live in a shadow. So we actually have some of those as food. So, I would just want to tell you to expect that enrollment has declined a little bit, um, and we think it's in part due to scheduling changes that are gonna take time to sort of flesh out. You know, one, one thing that we need to be cautious of, um, is the F T E counts of a hundred and fifty, as, as the law stands in that, it might change, um, that, that hundred and fifty F T Es, which is not a hundred and fifty students, that's, that's a place over four hundred students. Once we go below that, we lose some funding, uh, from the state for salary assistance for a couple of positions. Uh, they don't pay the positions fully, but just to be aware, that's the number we're always keeping our eye on. That might change with legislative, uh, action, I don't know yet, but just, that's something that we can keep an eye on, uh, going forward. And so, that's what I have.
Thank you. The only thing I have, is I was kind of stunned when I received my envelope, and see you paying ten dollars to receive this.
Only for this meeting, because there's so much material in there, and that's why we like you to get your information on your iPad. But for this meeting, we send it out to make sure you have everything you need.
I forget, what's a normal package cost?
Maybe three dollars.
All right, thank you.
I guess I do one more thing, enough of that. So if you could let Sandy know how you prefer to get your, to get your information about the board meetings, if you prefer electronically, um, just look in the Dropbox, let her know. Um, if you're looking for an iPad or device, we have them for you if you need them. If you prefer paper, just let Sandy know, and she'll mail it back. Just know sometimes it doesn't hit there a time, um, and sometimes information in the paper packet might be a little bit different than when you get the board meeting, like the nominations day, or, yeah, if it wasn't done until like yesterday. Just be aware of that, but let Sandy know, and, uh, one of the easiest for you is possible.
Anybody have anything else to contribute? So you've done motion to adjourn?
So moved. Thank you.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.